We have one minute to go if you would ladies and gentlemen make sure your phones are on silent please before we get started. And we will be having roll call votes this evening. We have one. Those two dollars? Yes, sir. We've been, we've been trying to do that ever since, um. Roll just for the record.
President.
Alderman Systrom.
Here.
Alderman Vaughn.
Here.
Here.
Alderman Beatty.
Here.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Here.
Alderman Vaughn.
Here.
All right, thank you very much. And with that, we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by invocation given to us by Alderman Vaughn and a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the call.
Believe in heaven, Father. Believe in God Jesus. Believe in the Holy Spirit. Believe in heaven and family. The God of creation, the God of life, the God and Father, the Lord Jesus Christ, the God and the Holy Spirit, God who does all things, one and one and made the heavenly and earth and the full and the narrow. The God who makes all things like nothing and who governs all the dangers. Father God, we thank you. Pray now, God, that you keep the Lord in our city. There's no other one in the city than you. Thank you again so much for this mayor, this holy Father God, all the Republicans here in this city and province. And I thank you for what you all have allowed us to come. Your honest terms, your terms behind us, we just want to say thank you. Pray now that you could just continue to direct our world, our world, our prayer, our prayers, while we will be concerned about the those who mourn and elect us. Father God, we thank you. We thank you because you are mighty, you are wise, you are knowing, you are powerful, you are seeing, you are hearing, you are understanding that. We thank you. We thank you, Father God, for changing for and to see what we have not because we ask, we ask you in the name of Jesus that you be in the midst of tonight. Father God, we thank you so much because first John 21 says, "See, we know the Father, goodness." And we all be called children of God, and so we are. We long to pray for those in Ukraine and all this going on in Buffalo, New York, all the things that go on around us. We know God, but you see it all, ladies. We know that. But we thank you for being our God who deserves, being our Father, we need your children. Thank you again so much for controlling our destiny. Nothing else in heaven and there. We thank you and pray you should know and glorify. We glorify your name also through your appointment. Father God, this is Jesus. We thank you.
Thank you again. We appreciate everyone being here this evening. Our first order of business will be approval of the official agenda with consented items. Or let me go around and see if there are any changes to the agenda or the consented items. Alderman Carver, any changes?
No ma'am.
Alderman Systrom?
No ma'am.
Alderman Rupp?
No ma'am.
Alderman Brooks?
No ma'am.
Alderman Beatty?
No ma'am, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
No ma'am.
Alderman Vaughn?
No ma'am, thank you.
All right, thank you. With that, if I could get a motion and a second for approving the official agenda with the consented items as listed.
Most good.
I have a motion from Alderman Beatty. Do I have a second?
Said.
Second from Alderman Vaughn. If you would please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Systrom.
Yea.
Alderman Rupp.
Yea.
Alderman Brooks.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
It is unanimous. Thank you so much. And I will now read the consented items. First, it's consideration of the minutes of the April 19th, 2022 meeting of the mayor and board of Alderman of the city of Starkville. Consideration of the minutes of the April 29th, 2022 special call meeting of the mayor and board of Alderman of the city of Starkville. And third is consideration of the minutes of the April 29th, 2022 work session of the mayor and board of Alderman of the city of Starkville. Under mayor's business, we have consideration of a board order to establish the annex territory as subject to the Advoal on Tax Requirements of the city of Starkville effective for the current fiscal year 2022 in accordance with Mississippi Code 27353. Item B is consideration of the approval of proposal for the redistricting for the city of Starkville submitted by GTPDD in the amount of $10,000. C is consideration of authorizing the mayor and sanitation and environmental services director Chris Smiley to determine the distribution of garbage bags. D is consideration of proclaiming the termination of the existence of a local emergency related to COVID-19. Under board business, we have item B, which is a resolution of the mayor and board of Alderman of the city of Starkville authorizing the engagement of certain professionals to assist with the authorization, issuance, sale, validation, and delivery of the proposed general obligation public improvement bonds of the municipality, a general obligation public improvement bond of the municipality for sale to the Mississippi Development Bank, or a loan from the Mississippi Development Bank to the municipality, all in one or more federally taxable or tax exempt series and/or related matters. Item D is consideration of a resolution appointing Alderman Vaughn as the 2022 voting delegate and Alderman Beatty as the alternative voting delegate for the city of Starkville to the 2022 Mississippi Municipal League Summer Conference in Biloxi, Mississippi, June 27th through 30th of 2022. E is consideration of approval of approving the proposal from Kim Lee Horn to develop plans for George Evans Needmore Community Center and McKee Park Phase One. Under department business, item B is community development planning, consideration of FP 22-08, a request for final plan approval for Triangle Crossing Shopping Center at 601 Highway 12 West in a C zoning district. Under engineering, we have one, consideration of canceling the bid for the construction of the Louisville Street traffic signal improvements and authorization to re-advertise for bids. Item two, under engineering, consideration of change order number two for the SHS Bridge project with additional funds estimated to be $73,000 above the grant amount being provided equally by the Starkville Octobah County Consolidated School District and Octobah County Supervisors. Number two is acceptance of the April financial statements under city clerk. Number three is request approval to renew property insurance with Travelers. Number four is request approval for lowest quote of 2.94% for financing of fire department Dodge Durango and Environmental Services Kubota tractor from Bank First over three years. Under human resources, we have number one, request authorization to hire Alexandra Nash as code enforcement officer in Starkville Police Department. Two is request authorization to hire Kendall McKinstry as a radio operator dispatcher in the Starkville Police Department. Three is request authorization to hire Tristan Guy as a maintenance worker in the sanitation and environmental services department. Four is request authorization to hire Daniel Jones as an intern in Starkville Utilities Department. Five, request authorization to hire Patrick Gaines as part-time aircraft lineman, FBO, in the Starkville Airport Department. Six is request authorization to advertise for the following positions, one driver and one maintenance worker in the sanitation and environmental services department. Five police officers in the Starkville Police Department and one maintenance worker in the street department consistent with services and facilities plan agreement that was attendant to the annexation. Seven is request authorization to hire Chicania Davidson as an entry level firefighter in the Starkville Fire Department. Under police department, number one, request approval to purchase a police department access control system from Security Solutions, the lower of two quotes, at a total installed quote of $7,128.70. And B is request approval to apply for fiscal year '21 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, JAG, in the amount of $75,984 to be used in the area of hotspot policing, overtime, and equipment. Under utilities department, we have number one, request authorization to advertise for source of supply bids for the electric and water divisions of Starkville Utilities for July 1, 2022 through December 31, 2022. Number two is request authorization to declare the vehicle, machinery, fuel tanks, and motor as presented as surplus and listed on God deals. Number three is consideration of acceptance of the best bid for the wastewater 24-inch force main replacement from Southern Pipe and Supply in the amount of $221,989.52. And number four is request authorization to accept the lowest quote from the welding works for the removal of 11 trees in Green Oaks Neighborhood South Side and Rolling Hills Neighborhood Sanitary Sewer Rehab Project in the amount of $7,725. That concludes the consent agenda items for this agenda.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sir, my pleasure. Under announcements and comments, mayor's comments, I really don't have anything in particular. We have a quiet week coming up. Graduation has occurred, and so we'll be kind of quiet for a little while, but hoping that next year with cornerstone going, we will be quiet at all. We'll be constantly having things going on. Any other comments? Alderman Carver, anything?
Um, no ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Systrom?
No ma'am.
Alderman Rupp?
Yes ma'am, registration for Lemonade Day continues June 11th. We've got dozens of kids signed up. Hope to see dozens.
All right, June 11th, and that'll be pretty much all over town. They, is it online? Do they come to see you, or is there some?
They can go to Facebook and put in Golden Triangle Lemonade Day and you'll get all you need.
Okay, all right, thank you. Alderman Brooks?
No ma'am, thank you.
All right, Alderman Beatty?
No ma'am, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
No ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Vaughn?
No ma'am, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Next, we have citizen comments. Anyone that wishes to speak to us for three minutes, you have an opportunity to provide us input. It will be timed by our city clerk, and it is usually not a back and forth. It's generally a one-way flow of conversation. So, Mr. Turner, good evening.
Greetings, Mayor Boe. My name is Evan Tunnawood. Seven, I would turn the mayor to the police department, to the fire department. Citizens have a few concerns. One being you need more center. Uh, uh, we hear a lot of stuff, but we just need to understand what's really going on. You can't believe everything you hear. Uh, Starkville elect department, who's in charge? Uh, city engineer, who's in charge? Uh, sister, uh, we have to scramble around to get paper. We're kind of behind with everything. Uh, the gospel in the park is going well. Uh, hope that it continues. And we'd like for the preachers and pastors to pray for our young, uh, let young men be losing to the, uh, apartment, uh, property, uh, corrections, and that bit hurts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Thank you, Mayor Sproul. Members of, ladies and gentlemen, members of the Board of Alderman, uh, some of you folks remember me from some time back, Tommy J. Gregory. And I represent Duncan Williams Investment Bankers and having a conversation with Alderman Carver and Alderman Beatty, and I'll see you on your agenda tonight. Y'all are beginning the process of thinking about issuing some bonds. Uh, I worked for Duncan Williams Investment Banking Firm. It's an over 50-year-old firm in Memphis, Tennessee. And up until February last year, we were family owned, and the Williams family merged with a bank, South State Banking Trust. But the good part about it is all of our employees that, that interact with cities and counties and work with various professionals, we have not changed. And unfortunately, I think, I attribute this to COVID when nobody was able to travel or nobody was able to come and meet in person. I think a lot of people got the idea that Duncan Williams was out of the bond business, but we're not. And we would certainly like to, uh, give test the board, the mayor, as you start moving forward, start engaging professionals to help you with this bond financing, that you'll give our firm due consideration. Because I know we've, uh, we've had privilege to do work here in the city, do work for your school district, do work with the county. I think we actually initially financed this building we're standing in tonight. But I appreciate this time. I appreciate Alderman Beatty and Alderman Carver, uh, just reaching out to me. I don't know if we were still, still around, and we certainly are. But, uh, would like to be happy to answer any questions, but just wanted to remind you who I am, who we are, and ask you to just keep us in mind as y'all start, start that process.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Thank you.
My name is Thomas McLean. Hanlon's Razor is one of my favorites, and it says, "Never tribute to malice that which is adequately explained by ignorance." Last session, I said, "A yea or nay for Molly's termination means yea or nay to letting people change official systems for their benefit, to favoring some public individuals over others, to letting city employees form gangs and house people they don't like, to letting the mayor and her administration fill their ranks with pushovers and yes-men." And you voted yea. You may be thinking, "It isn't true. It's a false equivalency." Sure, you can vote to terminate Molly, and you did. But now that she is gone, the exact people who caused this problem will be hiring her replacement. You can be sure that they are going to screen out anyone who shows an ounce of self-confidence or intestinal fortitude. The next permanent technician will be another pushover. I have to ask, did you vote yea because you actually thought it was the right thing to do? Or because it was a convenient thing to do? The situation was mishandled from the start. I wonder what else the Board of Alderman and the city administration have mishandled. How about parking? Last session, you admitted the rollout was awful. Yet there has been no mention of the $16,000 in tickets you reaped from citizens and visitors during that time. Where did that money go? How about the two cases of embezzlement you recently had? Last session, I called for an audit of another city department. Is that underway? If not, why? The top floor of City Hall is by different rules, not laws, not policy. The mayor and her thugs are the law up there. If you are a town favorite, you get preferential treatment and discounts. If you are not a local or they don't like you, you pay full price. And the Board of Alderman just fired the only person that actually enforced those policies and refused, refused to show this favoritism. Vice Mayor, you spoke of checks and balances two sessions ago. Where are their checks and balances now? If you only apply them when it's convenient, then you may as well not have them at all. We might as well get rid of the board. I was in the Marines for 10 years. I swept dirt and mopped rain. I sat in convoys for six hours to go six miles. If you think I will give up because we have been slightly inconvenienced, then you are wrong. I will not forget how you wronged my family, and I will not let you forget either. To quote Sun Tzu, "The wheels of justice grind slow, but grind fine." I have accounts from city personnel currently and formerly employed, business owners, and citizens about incidents of nepotism, racism, sexism, harassment, fraud, waste, and abuse in which the city administration is complicit. I gave you a chance to make this right, and instead you chose to add to the wrongs. I will at least make those wrongs available permanently on public record. To the people of this city and state, I encourage you to call your legislators and tell them to support the Mississippi Recall Act. I also take this opportunity to voice my intent to create a Starkville Cities Workers Union, as well as a Spruil Properties Tenant Union. If you treat your employees this poorly, I would hate to see how your tenants are treated.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. All right, first item of business will be, um, under board business will be the authorizing a resolution, um, for the intent to declare, uh, the intention, the intention to issue general obligation public improvement bonds of the municipality and, um, in the amount of $10 million. And I'm going to defer to Alderman Systrom because she has been the founding father, founding mother of this particular concept, and I think will give us a good recount of all that's associated with this. So, Alderman Systrom.
Thank you. Joel, can you take us to that first graph, please? Um, the first graph that, that you'll see up there is a summary of, um, the overlay projects that the city of Starkville has done over the last 20-plus years. And you'll see that the numbers, um, have, have spiked in some years. It's only in the last few years that we've settled into a pattern of, of doing a consistent amount of work each year. Those early spikes typically are going to line up with a bond, where we issued bonds and did a lot of work in a short period of time. Um, the last five years where we're hitting that consistent four to five miles a year of overlay projects are due to a policy that the board adopted to fund this. It involved a bond issue and the use of, um, use tax for funding, funding this, um, this, these projects. It also, we had a plan for how we would move forward to continue to sustain that over time. Well, we, we adopted that policy. We have a four-year, um, capital improvements plan. We're in our second phase of that four-year capital improvements plan. Um, what we've found is that, um, use tax at both the state level and the city level have continued to increase. So, the policy and the plan that we developed was based on an expectation that the city would collect about 1.6, perhaps 1.7 million dollars in use tax annually when that was fully phased in. Um, next graph, please, Joel. And what we've found is that, um, our use tax, again, at the state level has increased, and the diversion to the city of Starkville has increased. And so, we are probably more likely to have an annual contribution to this, um, project of street improvements of, um, 2.2 to 2.3 million dollars, which got us to talking about how do we, how do we best use that additional money? And you'll see that trend line there just, just shows that that continues to, to grow. Even if it's, um, does not grow at the rate that it has over the last five years, at the state level, it's grown 20% plus on average over the last five years. Even if it doesn't continue to grow in that rate, we're still looking at 2.2, 2.3 plus, um, dollars of use tax. So, um, another thing that happened in addition to this, this money is that the state legislature changed how you can use use tax funds. When they originally, um, created this diversion to cities, municipalities, and counties, um, it, it was strictly to be used for infrastructure projects of certain type and on a pay-as-you-go basis. They, in not this session, but the previous session, extended that to say that you could use these monies for debt service. And so, you can now issue bonds and pay for it with use tax monies. What that means to the city is that we can take our four-year capital plan, look at our minor arterial roads and our collector roads, our, our busiest streets that everybody in town drives on, and find a way to compress the improvements to those streets from four years to two years. Doesn't impact the remainder of the plan. It stays in, in place and, and carries forward as it, as it always has. If the, if the use tax continues to grow, we can add more minor collector and arterial streets to the plans, or perhaps other, other street projects to the plans. Um, tonight, um, tonight, we are strictly authorizing the bonds, up to $10 million, and, um, in the series of one or more sets of bonds. More than likely, it will be multiple series. More than likely, the first issuance will be about $5 million. Um, but that's to be determined as we develop a street list, which is one of our next steps. Um, as we develop, um, a list of what our needs are going to be, we'll, we'll, we'll pin down the amount and the timing of those issuances. Um, there's another related item on the agenda tonight for engaging financial professionals, and I wanted to, um, be sure that everyone understands that the two financial professionals that we're engaging tonight are, um, Brad Davis of Watkins, Warden, Eager, who's our bond counsel, and Chris Latimer of Mitchell McNutt, our city attorney. We are not engaging tonight, um, financial advisor, a bond underwriter, or any other, um, financial professionals. We will come back. If we make a determination that we need to use those, we will come back to that, and it will be a, a competitive process, either request for proposals for financial advisors or competitive bidding on, on the bonds. But, um, the bottom line is, we have the rare opportunity of doing a lot of work to streets that everybody in town uses over a short period of time, and, um, the authorization of these bonds is the first step in, in doing that.
Okay, I'm going to weigh in just for a minute because there are a couple of things that I either slept through or didn't say, and that is that these are, we're looking at doing 10-year bonds.
Yes, they would be eight to 10-year bonds.
Because, yes, because the important element of that is that those roads that we're going to improve probably will have a life of eight to 10 years. And at the end of that life, we'll be able to do this all over again and maintain those roads in a condition that we can be proud of. And I think that the things that tell us and, and tell others who we are and what we care about in large part are, are streets. And so, we're talking about, uh, streets that are highly impactful when we have visitors who we clearly want to have in town with the sports tourism and MSU and the athletics that come along with that and the events that we hold. And so, I think it's really, I really think it's wonderful and an opportunity that we have not had in the past, and I, and I look forward to us, um, being able to really make a difference over the next couple of years. So, I'm, I'm pretty excited about this, and, and that ability to do that based on that legislative change is wonderful. So, kudos to the legislature. Uh, and we will go through for discussion purposes. Alderman Vaughn, any comments about this, ma'am?
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor?
No ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Beatty?
Mayor, yes, and before the, before the suggested motion and stuff, um, well, you know, we, you and I talked a little bit, talked a little before a meeting about this. Um, we expect a dollar-for-dollar match up in state if they can get their act together, get into session, and, um, and allocate the money, uh, for the, for the ARPA money, which would, would bring our total possible amount of monies for allocation for that type of water sewer kind of stuff to 12.6 million. Um, if they don't, um, do we need to possibly reevaluate the water sewer, street, our allocation? In other words, we got, if we issue $10 million in bonds and we start, uh, do a resolution to, to issue up to 10 million, and we do a 5B, a 5B series, Starkville, simple, but total 10 million, um, got 6.3 in ARPA, well, that's 16.3 million. Do we need to go back and put everything in the hop, try to go, go back and reevaluate where we prioritize, street, water sewer, assuming, well, let's put it this way, the state may come through with the money, may come through with the money this year, they might not come through with the money this year. Do we need to go back and, and relook at, at how we spend our potential monies, the 6.3 ARPA money, up to the $10 million in the bond money for streets, or, or, you know, other purposes, um, comprehensively try to reevaluate how we want to do it? What, what I'm concerned about is that we're going to do a lot of streets we depended on. I know we've got a list over here that had $13 million or something in water sewer improvements, but that's based on second dollar-for-dollar match. If that doesn't come through, then we, we've got to fall back and decide how do we prioritize. And if we prioritize fewer water sewer lines, what streets maybe get put back off, taken off the priority list or something until we get water and sewer lines on or something like that? I guess what I'm saying is, the engineering department and the water sewer department or utilities department all be kind of working together. We all be kind of getting around the table and trying to determine with this, with this $10 million in bond money and 6.3 in ARPA money, right now, that's the money we have available for water, sewer, and street infrastructure. And some of it's going to be dependent on others, like water and street being overlaid may be dependent. There's certainly a contingent on putting new water sewer lines down if we deem that certain street or that part of town, um... of town necessary to do that. So I guess that's what I would say is that we're going to have a lot of money for street infrastructure. It's got to be spent for its street infrastructure, because that's how the, that's how the use tax, the MIA money is designated to be spent. At the same time, we almost need to just kind of go back and figure out how, this is a list that's got a five-year, or four, if I want to put it, five-year list of prioritization, but some of the streets on this thing may become streets now that we want to put water sewer lines on. And do they follow, obviously, we don't want to pay them and they come back and put water sewer lines in after the fact in tapatary streets. So what is your opinion on that? Tell me what you think.
Well, obviously, your initial premise is correct. We are, we are working under the assumption that we're going to get ARPA money, matching ARPA money from the state. And if we do not, then we're going to have to go back and reevaluate what we're doing. But I'm very hopeful that we will have at least some element of matching funds. I would like to think they'd match us 100%, but they may only match us 50%. And whatever it is they do, we will be bound by their criteria, obviously, on what they match us with. If they don't match the full amount, then the remaining amount that's not matched will be subject to whatever we want to do with it. And that's going to require the board to get together and, and assess that.
So our water sewer and street thing is going to become fluid, because we don't know right now how much money, if, if it's not a dollar-for-dollar match. It's going to be something, or if they wait and they don't, Collins, Collins hasn't a special session this year, in the remainder of the year, we may be 23 before we get money. What, Alderman Sistrung?
I'll be happy to call on Alderman Sistrung for you, but let me, let me remind you that this would take a board order to do differently, because we do have that resolution that we gave, which I think you got in front of you there. But we would come back and revisit that as how we want to do this if we're no longer pegged to a state matching amount. So Alderman Sistrung?
May I be mine?
You, you, we'll, we'll call on you, and then we'll work our way back on, on back down the table.
Two, two, two or three things. The state has a, has a process that they are working out the minor details of, in terms of how they will distribute the money that they have allocated for ARPA matches. MDEQ is tasked with, I think I'm right, MDEQ is tasked with accepting applications. They will be rolling out an application process, hopefully, in, in the next month or two. And then they will probably be engaging consultants that will help them evaluate the, the proposals that they get. All the things that we have put on our, our wish list and all the things that streets and water and sewer are prepared to submit are wheelhouse projects of the type that should meet their, their criteria for, for match. Okay, let's say everything goes to hell in a handbasket, and, and we get no matching funds. We have a Plan B. And Plan B is that we have authorized the Water and Sewer Department to issue up to $7 million in bonds, revenue bonds, that would be paid for on an ongoing basis. So while you're, you're right that we need to very carefully coordinate our water and sewer projects with our street overlays, because nobody hates doing a nice street project and then coming and digging it up more than, than the Board of Aldermen, because we hear it from everybody when we do that. But, but we will make those sorts of coordinations, and we will either fund the water sewer parts of those projects through ARPA match, and, and we're hopeful that that's what will happen, or we will issue bonds.
And that, that 7 million gets you right back up to the total amount?
Yes, it will.
That was a part of that work.
And I, and I'll say this, and I'm going to drop out, and I'm going to support it completely tonight. But I think that, I think the Water and Sewer Department, Utility Department, and Engineering Department need to be coordinating on this thing. I mean, let's end it, let's write it, do that kind of thing. It's a lot of money. It's 14, 13, 14 million in water sewer, 10, 23, 23 million, that's a lot of money in a city size.
And let me assure you that these folks, I mean, Mr. Kemp, now being the Utilities Director, was a city engineer, and so he has been working with the folks that are in the Engineering Department, and they are absolutely in lockstep, working together to make this happen for us in a way that makes sense and doesn't cause us to be working against one another for water, sewer, and overlays.
Will the Board of Aldermen brought back in to, in a reevaluation or a, a thing on the street, the street allocation, prioritization process?
Yes, we will, we will do a work session on the elements of this $10 million that we want to, that we want to spend. And, and obviously, it's going to be a little bit fluid depending on ARPA money, but yeah, we have every intention of coming back and doing a work section, work session on the streets.
Is that a point in time our, our, our Engineering Department and our Utility Department could advise with us by being hopefully able to scope some of the water, have information on water sewer, where we may be headed on the streets, that kind of thing?
They are already working that, putting that together.
Okay. Mayor?
All right, thank you. Yes, sir. Alderman Brooks?
Well, in my opinion, this, this proposal represents, you know, an excellent opportunity to make some major infrastructure improvements that, you know, that would be game changers in, in doing this without a tax increase. So I, I have to support it. I, I was, and I appreciate Alderman Sistrung clearing up about the Utilities bonding, because I thought we had the $7 million out there. So if, you know, things went sideways with ARPA, we did have another option. Again, I'm in, I'm in favor of this. Thank you, Mayor. Aye yeh.
Thank you, Alderman Brooks. Alderman Rupp?
Yeah, I want to thank Alderman Sistrung for thorough explanation, and I'm certainly in agreement with Alderman Beatty about making sure we're not paving and then digging them up. But again, this is a resolution of intent. This is a necessary first step that we need to take before we do anything. And I think the premise is, is really good and.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Alderman Sistrung?
I, I would just like to say that as much as I would like to think that in three months we're out there overlaying streets, it's not going to be quite that fast a project, because there is a lot of engineering work.
But we will be for this year.
We, we will be doing this year's plans. With this money, we won't be doing it in three months, because there's a lot of engineering work yet to be done and a lot of coordination with water and sewer. There's a possibility that some of those might qualify, that, that the overlays are so straightforward that they can be done as part of this year's overlay plan. And there's a more likely possibility that most of those will happen next year, next fiscal year, next calendar year, and maybe even bleed into the fiscal year after that.
For clarity, we are spending $1,003,000 on paving this year.
We are.
My phone starts, there it goes.
The $1,003,000 that we're spending this year is coming from a combination of the remainder of the bond funds for the last set of bonds that we issued and use tax monies.
Alderman Carver?
I was just going to ask about the, this building and how it affected our road mileage that we could get paved. I know Alderman Vaughn voted against this, and Alderman Perkins and myself, we voted against this building. Coincidentally, if you go back to that graph that shows the years, did y'all, the city attorney, I've read a few articles, you're quoted in them. Do you remember those conversations? We talked about this building, and we were just going to have a decrease in road mileage, and do you remember those? Let's go back. Well, I'll tell you, I'll tell you what I remember. You can fact check all this tomorrow, Zach, for us. But right there with those big, and you're right, with the bonding mechanisms and that, and the big decrease, and it's pretty much level, level maintained. This building was, I think, three or four referendums, voted by the public, and the last one was 8.45 million.
Police station.
Police station. It was 1.3 million for the police station, and this was 6.5 or 8 million. Fact check me tomorrow, I'm just, I'm kind of throwing this off the cuff. But I would just say that, I don't, I don't think this building's beautiful and everything. It's just one of those, we didn't think, we could have gotten another building down the road at much more discounted. It's what's Cadent Building, which now is going to be the hub, which is a, a great, you can see that being an anchor for the downtown area. But I was told that we could have made wiser financial decisions. There was a public referendum for the 8.45, which failed by a majority of the public and the wise in the administration immediately. This building was, I think, bought by West Brothers and leased back for 20 years. Y'all can, I know that's, that's correct. But you see that, you see these decreases, and it's just, it's not anything other than a political decision. I was told the pie is so big, and you can split it so many ways. And this building has definitely served its purpose. I'm not saying that. There's a lot of history to that, and I want to commend Alderman Sistrung. Years later, you come down, that's been construction completed in 14 or 15, and the police renovation, which is an old bunker. It's a historical preservation-type building. It was completed. And both of these are, are good assets for the city of Starkville. And through the political, the wills of the political agenda, we ended up with the City Hall being here. This was an old electric department, and I know some of us, for some people's time, but it was a hill, a cliff right here, and that's why it's got this unique architectural design. But so it, you see those flat lines, and you haven't seen the paving the last, what, 11 years, but you've seen in the previous years. And there were some other boards that did some big bonds and took care of the big, big high spikes. But, you know, it's, it's time. I really want to commend Alderman Sistrung for taking the lead on this. This is her, her background, has made a career out of these type things. But just, it's going to be good for the city. I think I had a baseball coach, and kind of said, any plan is better than no plan. And this is proper planning right here. This is something that you, you're getting a plan in place. And the only other thing I saw on that big, long agenda item, and I had a personal question, was you and I, I was really just thinking it was more for, more like roads and things. But this is, it says streams and channels and things like that. That was back to, is there, I was asked by two or three people, were there any specific projects in mind?
No, this is, this is very broad bond language that would cover just about anything that we wanted to do if, if we found ourselves in a position of being able to do it. If it were more restrictive language right now, then we wouldn't have those, that flexibility going forward. So the idea is, and, and this is typical of our, our bond issuance language when we're doing that. And if, if I may quickly point out, the bond issues in '09 and '10 were the same bond issues in the 17, 18 years. The difference is price of, price of materials and doing the work in two years as opposed to spreading it out over four years.
And I was going to ask you that. So what's left as MDEQ, is this argon odor percentiles from diversion? Is it that?
They just, they just have to develop their application process and let, let municipalities and counties make their applications.
All right, thank you. Alderman, Beatty?
As I understand it, though, we're going to tie the debt service to this, our, our use tax, MIA, use tax, debt service and bond, which is going to restrict what we can do. It's got to be water, sewer, and street infrastructure. We can't broaden it out into stormwater. You can't do things, if you even want to do it to stormwater or electrical, something like that, restricted on, if you're using, if we're tying the debt to debt service from, from use tax, and we sell in bonds based on that, won't that have accounted for that material consideration on the front?
Yes. But, but that doesn't necessarily mean we'll expend all $10 million on that, so you can parse it out, so that it's not necessarily tied strictly to the use tax.
Okay, thanks.
All right, any other discussion? If not, entertain a motion?
Motion.
Have a motion to approve? Is that correct?
I think so.
And Wes, quick.
Oh, Alderman Sistrung gets something too.
Did you want to make a motion?
No, no.
Okay.
Alderman Sistrung, you were.
Okay, come here. I got a motion from you, Alderman Sistrung, a second from you?
I think Alderman Rupp wanted a second.
You know, quick draw, McGraw got out in front of us.
I'm just going to assign a second to somebody.
I'm happy to second.
All right, thank you. I have a motion from Alderman Beatty and a second from Alderman Rupp. Without any further discussion, if you would, plans to answer yea or nay as a city clerk. Call your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrung.
Yea.
Alderman Rupp.
Yea.
Alderman Brooks.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
Thank you. It is unanimous. I appreciate that. All right. Next item on the agenda is discussion, consideration of cotton district parking issues. Alderman Beatty, this was at your request, so would you like to leave with this discussion?
Yes, and I have Alderman Brooks on speaker. He is available. Mayor, I just wanted us to go back and, we'll talk about some, talk about this some Friday, but let's tie the loose ends together and get a plan in place for if we're going to put some kiosks in, some Alderman forms of being able to pay, or pick the paint on the parking cotton district. Let's get all that in place before we go reinstitute paid parking in city Starkville. I guess that's, that's the gist of what I wanted to say. And if it, if it involves or entail getting a park mobile, just someone that does the kiosk, that you were talking about there, Dave, and me, that's, that's, they, they sell and install these things. Their expertise is probably coming in looking at our, our parking configuration, our streets and stuff, that can build and make a recommendation whether we need one or two or higher, or we needed these things, where they'd be located. But I, I hate to see us go back in. We rolled it out. We probably, in hindsight, could have done it a little bit differently. And I would want us to have ready all the components in place, including if we need kiosks, if we need a second coat of green paint, whatever we need, to have it all ready the next time we reinstitute this. And I wouldn't just, for us to just set a, not an arbitrary, but a date, early in June, until we can, until we can get everything in place to do that. And I'll, I'll, but you'll.
Just let me fill in. I, I called Mr. Chisholm. He is with Access Control, and I was unable to get him today, but I left a message. And my request to him will be for him to come assess our parking situation and where kiosks, if any, would appropriately go in the areas that are street. They are normally intended for things like parking lots. But if there is a collective area that makes sense, I was going to ask him to come be in town and, you know, work with us to see where that might be an appropriate area, where there is an appropriate area in the areas that we've got selected. We have painted the, the lines green. That has been done. The signs are ordered. The larger signs are ordered. The flyers have, have been scheduled to go out and should be in the first shipment of utility bills in the next couple of days, if not already out. So we should all be receiving them. So, you know, the effort of, of getting the word out, although based on all of what we've had going on, I think the word is out there now. So I am less concerned with the word being out and people understanding what's going on at this point. I don't know that necessarily, I, I don't agree with you on this one, Alderman, Alderman Beatty. I do think that June the 3rd is the, is the 30 days from the ordinance, and I, and I do think we can go ahead and, and roll it out, because I don't think it's a lack of knowledge anymore. It may not be quite as convenient, but there is still parking that is available on side streets that I think that, you know, if you didn't want to exercise the use of the Park Mobile app, then you can do that. I, I know that the folks who are impacted by it in the depths of the Cotton District certainly are still in favor and find it to be a favorable way for their customers and clients to access their business. So from that perspective, that's, that's kind of where I am on it. But we will, Alderman Carver?
I'll say, I, I've fed a lot of questions, and I don't have the answer for these four or five. One, we're a 16,000 figure. All of the tickets that were written, can we exempt those individuals, or they have to appear in court? I saw some of your comments, they, they appear in court and contest it?
They have, they have either paid for it, or they may appear in court and contest it. So that is, that is entirely up to them. A lot of them are out-of-town folks. So, and I don't know how much it is, the 16,000. I have no.
Is that something that I could make a motion tonight and exempt those tickets? I mean, if that's something, we broke one of our own ordinances, you know, it says all public parking should be free and charged. Is that something that holds weight in court law? That we can, you think so?
So the way we were handling it, Alderman Carver, is because there were other provisions that also gave the city enforcement power. I didn't like it, because it was a contradiction between the first ordinance that said shall be free and those other provisions that talked about enforcement with stricter requirements by the board. So arguably, we let it up to the, well, not arguably, we left it up to the judge to make a case-by-case basis for people who want refunds, and that's still the position of the city to have.
Okay. But could there be a motion made tonight to exempt those tickets written in that time period that were in contradiction to the ordinance?
The board could certainly do that.
I'll make that motion in just a little while. But secondly, I'll say this, and I've met with a few individuals. Mayor and I have talked to a lot of business owners that were in support of, of parking pre-COVID, post-COVID. I think it's a different world. I think online shopping became dominant, and businesses struggled all over the country and the world. Just, I don't think the timing's right on this. I will say I'm partly at fault. The big issue, in my opinion, two, is the Cotton District, and you said the depths are, heard different words from a life safety standpoint. I talked to chief, and the Cotton District probably, or couldn't be built exactly as it is today from our codes and, and our standards, even just from a life safety fire truck standpoint, but often other things. So, you know, I've talked to some business owners in the Cotton District, and I'm more of a, a lean toward yourself enforcement. If you've got employees that work for you, you should be able to handle your employees. That's part of being a good manager. If somebody pulls up in front of the shop they work for and they, they hold that spot for their entire eight or nine-hour shift, I think that's irresponsible management. And if you, if you know your employees are doing it, why don't you just address that? That's a minor issue to me. And I say College View is something I voted for. I think that the bed capacity there is, is definitely too much for the space that it sits on. I think you're going to see continual issues right there in, in the depths of the Cotton District. I don't, I don't know that when you, with the T5-type district, I believe, if you start really con- if you start really convincing people down in that area, I know that's a desirable place to be, anywhere you can get closer to university, I just don't think that that was a correct move all the way around by boards, and I'm, I'm, I'm pointing the finger at myself on that, that is a big, big development with a lot of, a lot of individuals walking and, uh, and, and the parking situation that it's creating is not good. And then the last thing I was asked about the legal tender, I'm still getting asked, hey, I wanna pay, this is a US dollar that says it's, uh, does that not supersede public or local ordinances?
Yeah, no, the Mississippi Attorney General's recently spoke on that, and I looked at it after you brought it up, after the last meeting, and, uh, an article was circulated on it. First of all, the Federal Reserve says that private businesses are free to develop their own policies about whether they take cash or not.
Private.
Unless there's a state law that says otherwise.
Okay.
Attorney General Lynn Fitch has said that she's aware of no federal or state law that would compel a business to take cash. So if somebody still wanted to argue the legal, legal tender argue, argument, that hey, I've got twenty dollars, accept this or my debt is dissolved, that's between them and the business, but that's not anything that the city can dictate or not dictate, because there's not a law in the books about it.
But we're the ones that, that are pushing the private business to enforce that.
So, it, the way I see that apply, Alderman Carver, is whether you want a cash option on kiosks, but that's a policy decision the board's gotta make, based on all kinds of public policy circumstances.
Interesting.
That's what the board can control, but not a dispute between a vendor and a payroll.
And again, I'll always refer back to you on those legal matters, if you feel comfortable with it, then I feel comfortable. You?
All right, thank you. Alderman Sistrung?
No, ma'am.
Good. Alderman Rupp?
Yeah, so in my day job, I work with startups all day, every day, and I know how difficult it is for small business to get off the ground and be successful. So, as I've said before, I want to do what the businesses think is in their best interest down to university. So I'm hearing from, uh, Mike Brooks that the majority of businesses want it, and I hear from Alderman Carver that they don't, so I, so can you tell us which businesses don't want this?
Well, we only found six in favor, and I think three were owned by the same corporation. That was the list that the mayor provided in the previous meeting, uh, unless y'all can find more that are in support.
But who's against it?
Anybody that wouldn't, wouldn't talk to the mayor about it. See, I tasked her to go to all the thirty-four, thirty-six? Did you reach out to everybody that signed, that originally signed the letter and was in support of the letter?
No, I, I reached out to the people I knew who owned property and who, uh, had businesses there. So I reached out to Mordown Pizza and the Camps, who owned the property, and, um, Bulldog Burger, and Ben Six Twelve, and the Humble Taco, Taco folks, and Jeremy Taylor, who owns property along university. So I reached out to those folks that, um, were, you know, clearly had come to us before, concerned about the turnover in the area. Specifically, um, the Ben Six Twelve, Bulldog Burger, Mordown Pizza, and that store, that retail store actually came to me and asked me about it, it was a ladies, a women's shop there on the corner.
Let's do that. You wanna get some type of poll or something with all the businesses affected by this?
Well, we had asked, well, we did that with downtown. What I was asking, though, was what business had told you they don't want it?
I'm not gonna publicly say that. They not asked.
Well, I would ask them to let me know, because I'm hearing that more businesses do want it from Alderman Brooks, and it's in his ward, so I'm gonna bring you in on this mic, uh, what's the consensus? Cause that's, that's where I'm gonna.
If you, if you'll allow me, I'll.
I'm sorry, with, with the mayor permission to speak.
Well, no, it's, it's, would you, are you yielding to Alderman Brooks?
Until I hear he is.
All right. Alderman Brooks, uh, would you provide your input, please, sir?
Uh, yeah, and I don't know exactly how, how well you could hear me, if there's some sort of echo or what. Um, I'm getting a little, little maiming, but I'll try to, try to explain it as best I can, maybe you can understand me. In, in actuality, I actually got a call today from one of the restaurant owners, uh, there in the cotton district, and he was concerned, and what was interesting about it was, you know, now that we hadn't been enforcing the paid parking, he said, you know, when you guys don't enforce the paid parking, I, my customers have nowhere to park. You know, the students, here they come, they, they park out there on the streets, and, and, you know, I know Alderman Carver, you know, and I, and I, I have a business too, and, and I, I know how we think we can control employees and that sort of thing, but, you know, they can go down the street and park in front of somebody else's restaurant and still walk, and it may not be parked right in front of your own, but he has, he has employee problems also. Uh, but, you know, the, the students, uh, from, from primarily at the Vista, because we, we've discussed that, they're, they're underparked, and it's not anything that they necessarily did wrong, they, they took advantage of the zoning ordinance that was in effect at the time, you know, they, they would have to, in fact, have more parking today, but that's, ain't doing anything about that. Uh, so, you know, that, that was his thought, where, where the, you know, we, we quit enforcing the parking, and now he has, uh, you know, nowhere for his customers to park. Um, Alderman Beatty wants to delay this, and that, that gives me some heartburn, based on what he said, uh, in that, well, you know, we're, we're moving into the summer, and maybe some of these students are gonna be gone, but then, you know, if, if the employees are, are gonna be taking up some of those spots, or, you know, summer school starts, and then people will go back to doing like they, they were doing, and that's parking on the street and, and catching a bus to campus. But, uh, I, I have, I have talked, I know all these guys, uh, no, I know the majority of these restaurant owners and these property owners personally, uh, and I have talked to them, and, and as recently as just, uh, a week and a half ago, not counting this call I got today, and this was unsolicited, that call today, uh, I mean, he just picked the phone and called me, uh, uh, and they're, they're all in favor of it, you know? Yeah, we, we did, we just done a loud gate, we, we know that, and, uh, you know, the mayor's working toward, uh, getting, get, get more information out there, which is what we, what obviously we need to do, but, uh, you know, at, at this point, I, I, uh, I think we need to, uh, kinda stay the course on this thing, and, and if, if, uh, that it works out that, that the kiosk will in fact work with Park Mobile, and I don't know that we necessarily know that now, but if, if, if we, uh, if we find that out and we get some, some, some one in, that you kinda tell us where to put them and how that's gonna work, and how the, you know, how it's gonna wo, work with our app, as far as the, the license plates, and, you know, then we, we take a look at that, but, uh, but, you know, just based on the feedback I'm getting from the guys there in, in the cotton district, you know, my core group, you know, they, they're still in support of this, and, uh, you know, I think we, we, uh, you know, that, that's why we, we went down this road to begin with, was to, to turn the parking spots over for, for those guys. Uh, so, with that being said, uh, you know, I, 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 I'm in favor of just staying the course, uh, with our June startup, and it, but, but, you know, not giving up on this, these kiosks and that sort of thing, if, if we put it out there, and we'll work, and it, and it looks like that it's something that can be financially feasible for us, uh, in, in, uh, you know, and it's not some, some problem with talking to Park Mobile, then, then yeah, we, we'll take a look at that also. Uh, we got, we need to look at what, what it's gonna cost, obviously, on that, because, you know, we, we didn't set out to make money on this thing, but, but we do need to, uh, we don't need to, we don't need to go, go too far in hole with, anyway. And I, you, mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Brooks. Oh, and, and Alderman, uh, Carver, I forgot, uh, Two Brothers is another one that was in favor of, so I left them out, I'm sorry. All right, I'm gonna skip over down here. So Vice Mayor?
Mayor, um, we need to move on from this issue of parking every board meeting. You've, um, have always had a very great, may, or recommendation on this matter, and come June three of twenty twenty-two, we need to start enforcing it. And we need to live with this decision and move on to the next, um, governmental matter that's in the best interest of our city. I'm not in favor of delaying this matter anymore. Uh, come June three, twenty twenty, we need to let our police department do their job. Come June three, twenty twenty, you don't need to be in divisions of deciding whether we're gonna take an action to suspend the payment of any ticket that is lawfully issued, that's a matter for the municipal court. So I'm in favor of proceeding, as we have decided, uh, the public has been given sufficient notice of this matter. You worked very extensively. We've discussed this matter for the last several board meetings, and this honorable mayor and distinguished colleagues have discussed this matter very extensively, so I'm not in favor of delaying this. This board has done a great job in deciding, uh, by unanimous, by a majority, uh, decision as to what it wants to do, so hopefully, uh, we can, um, move on with the enforcement, uh, when the ordinance goes into effect, so we can move on to some discussions of some other, uh, city matters. So I'm in favor of what you have done already, you've done a great job, mayor, and, um, and the record is clear that we need to, um, leave this in place, and so we can start enforcing it so we can promote, um, matters that, uh, are in the best interest of our city. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Alderman?
I have no comments.
Okay, thank you. Um, Alderman Beatty, you have something else?
I'll be with you. Um, I'll come back.
I politely disagree with you, Vice Mayor, um, you and I tend to, to like to let the pot simmer. Um, I don't know if you're on social media or not, but there's literally thousands, you can call the chat, of thousands and thousands and thousands of comments pertaining to this matter. It is an important matter, and, uh, while we might disagree on the timing of, of issues, sometimes the government, things take longer than a, a meeting or two to discuss. I would say that. The only thing I, I'll leave it with, we obviously know how, uh, each and every one of us feels about this, is I would like to make a motion, City Attorney, you can do it, I think that we were against, uh, I think you said, verbatim, we put the cart in front of the horse, but exempt any individual that had received a ticket during that time period that, that we discussed, which was the six hundred and eighty-four tickets. Uh, is that correct? Is that that correct figure? Or this? That was the last, yeah, the last number you set up here, and I don't know, I think you understand my, uh, my objective, but to exempt, at least in good faith, as individuals that received a ticket during that timeframe.
That's your motion.
So you're, you're moving to, let me see if I get this right, to exempt those who have been ticketed by the city regarding Park Mobile app?
Up to date, yes.
The tickets associated with not using the Park Mobile app?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. And do I have a second to that motion?
I do, but can I add to, Alderman Rupp, that in second, a friendly amendment, whatever, a amendment?
Well, we actually need to get a second if you wanna do a friendly amendment to it. Are you, are you on the second?
I don't know what process, but I wanna, I wanna add something to it. I'm not allowed to do that.
Okay, second it, second it, okay. Do you wanna add a friendly amendment to it? Okay, do you wanna accept a friendly amendment? Do you wanna hear the friendly amendment, Alderman Carver?
Yes, ma'am, I accept that.
Alderman, thank you.
The proposal, the friendly amendment would be that we, that we delay implementation of paid parking until we get some expert advice from this access control company about the, about, usually about installation of kiosks, give people who don't have a, a smart mobile app, um, the ability to offer the kiosks and pay, and there are a lot of people like that. Um, the, um, sixteen thousand dollars worth of parking tickets we run in that area, that was a horrible public relations thing, I would say that. Um, and if, if, and their people that were, are gonna be a lot coming back to the cotton district, we might've done a good job of disseminating information, City Starland, we did not do a good job of disseminating information to people in Madison, the Gulfport, Ashford, Memphis, and places like that, enrolled in here for Super Bowl weekend, and got popped with tickets. Now, if I.
I just wanna make sure I've got your motion before we, before we have more dialogue here. So delay implementation until access control can install kiosks, or can provide us a study of kiosks, or?
So we, I think we need alternate, alternate means for people.
Okay, uh, okay, I'm just trying to write these down.
We look at these other places that we think are really uptown college places, and they're using kiosks in, in addition to the, the mobile app, and, um, if, if you don't, you're gonna carve out a whole segment of people that are gonna say, I don't have a Park Mobile app, I just wanna put in it.
Okay, so, do you wanna accept that as a friendly amendment, Alderman Carver?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so, okay, we need to vote on the friendly amendment first? Is that correct? Mr. Parliament, here, you vote on the first?
He's, he's accepted, so it's.
Okay, so there's no need to vote on it?
It's a joint motion.
Okay, all right, so now it's a joint motion, great. I'll have to figure out how to learn this. Okay, so here's, you want me to say what the motion is?
I just wanna know what the cost of the ticket we're considering. How much the cost of the ticket?
Twenty-five dollars. Um, so, the, the motion is to exempt those who paid for the tickets in, um, in violation of the Park Mobile app, and to delay implementation until access control can provide an alternate payment method.
I'm good.
Okay, all right, so I have a motion and I have a second. If you would, please answer yea or nay, as the city court calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrung.
Nay.
Alderman Rupp.
Nay.
Alderman Brooks.
Nay.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Nay.
All right, that motion fails. Do I have another motion of any kind? All right, hearing none, we will move along to, um, the claim stocking.
Move approval.
I have a motion, uh, to approve the claim stocking from Alderman Carver and a second from Alderman Rupp. Alderman, in favor, please answer yea or nay, as the city court calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrung.
Yea.
Alderman Rupp.
Yea.
Alderman Brooks.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Nay.
All right, that motion passes five to two, and that takes us to the end, I believe, yes, the end of our open session. We now need to have a vote to go into the closed determination session to determine the need for executive session. Do I have a, do I have a motion?
Move, move.
A motion from Alderman Vaughn and a second from Alderman Rupp. You would please answer yea or nay, as the city court calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Rupp.
Yea.
Alderman Brooks.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
All right, uh, we are going into a closed determination session to determine the need for executive session. If you would, please, through the room. If you would please through the microphone. Thank you.